Follow me to order, first order is to be the fight for defense.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For a move might be a meeting. A little bit cooler than Mount Scott, our second order is to be the consent of general to foods. Our May sixteenth regular council meeting minutes to request alcohol on same property, to approve restaurant, streets and parks supervisor, food security concern employees, request to advertise interview and recommend hire or maintenance technician for streets and parks department, to approve Jeffrey Morsec to the park board and to approve Dylan Brown as assistant pool manager. Where are we approval of consent agenda? I'll say we have motion in a second to appeal the consent agenda discussion. Was off, uh, bring JP, I, Jason, my David is I. Next we'll move on to public input, public input, uh, just a reminder three minutes and any reports, comments, I don't believe so. Uh, otherwise first up will be Miss Kathy Murphy with the American Indian family. Welcome Kathy.
Just wanted to give you guys a heads up on two thirtieth, which is approaching more quickly. We're collaborating with the parish captains and the agents and what's been fair raised for this is a call out to the girl. Um, they, it's a cycling. It's very cyclin, for wounded veterans and push responders and they came through last year. We found out very last minute and we asked us to post it at the region. Um, since then, they have both stated that I, um, um, have to go. They got the staff relation again on August twenty second. And in talking to them, we found out that for them to sponsor, um, a new bicycle and all the active equipment for the therapy is twenty five and one. So we're trying to do a fundraiser on the thirtieth, um, to sponsor at least one if I call it possible to. I mean, I know the rules, so, um, I'm, I'm, I've posted here. It's gonna be the end of the third event, it'll start at four thirty in the afternoon, go to approximately ten thirty at night. We're gonna do a dance party in the afternoon for the kids while on sidewalk, um, chalk, a scene team. Um, we're gonna fire trip the sprinkler and then, um, we're gonna do a doll dance party in the evening all out in parking lot. And then inside we'll be doing black light beanbag tournament. We're gonna be serving steak sandwiches, um, kids hot dogs with meal. So kind of we want to see totally inclusive of the community, both family, kids, adults, everyone's welcome. And we're also gonna be doing the thumb tank. I'd love to, could I will be there sweating up there and. Um, just sign up for a catalog to be in our room tank. So we're gonna be selling, you know, tickets to throw Jason and volunteers, so we're on bad demand.
We'll stay here, I'm sorry.
Um, the event is actually June thirtieth for fundraiser. And part of our student fundraiser too is that we just want to bring awareness to the actual organization. And then August twenty second, they will have their one that will come through town. And that'll take place, we won't know until probably a little bit closer to that date, but it'll roughly be between two thirty and three o'clock during the day and we'd love to line the streets with people all and just to have them walk around, I say come to town. When we had the Asian minister, we had about fifteen, twenty people that came down and it was fascinating. There were people from Germany, from Milan, from Australia, from Texas. It's a program that's nationwide. And the nice thing about those organizations is that the donations are represented by. There's not a ministry. I will leave this wire for you guys, um, hand down some birds, but. Um, really feel through the things that you guys are doing. Lots of listeners, so.
Thanks guys, thank you guys. All right, Mr. P, okay, sir. First time. I went, so what a why. Restaurant is which is our supervisor, rest of him. New, new job, so just talk like one point access or have two different question.
We're gonna be considering posts for the month that the three days is five.
Right, I'm to the Walter Lampers is an actor, but seven acres are being held back by the city for. For a new city hall, fire garden building, public porch watch.
I think a lot of that is more talk, a little town.
I don't see that. I hope so. Because I'm just making three more empty buildings on Main Street. City hall building, license building, part of the main street. And plus the city hall building is a historic building, the fire department building is currently new. Um, yeah, whatever's on our planet, it's such as a pop the. So I think they, I actually said that people are talking, coming up with stuff about, we have to get out there somewhere.
I think a lot of it's coming from Facebook talk and I can't provide.
Must be PhD, kind of, I don't know. Okay, this next one, um, maybe it's solid, we got a specific call here. I just was very disappointed, the city would not sell it on one A. It was such a, such a business, it was physical and north side, maybe that's all solved by one. And yet I, again, for us, a many, many of the lyrics, these ones who become some member, just partisan. The people who are across the public deploy, the rest three hundred concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, P. Wait, and. Let me make sure I get this name correct, is it Mickey? All right, I got that correct, all right. All right.
Need to watch day, uh, Mickey Leo, Matthew FPA. I'm gonna be in my later, I am a federal government relation specialist, also a tribal member of the Prairie Island B K B. Um, I wasn't planning, uh, speaking tonight or getting any sort of presentation, except me talking to, showing my editing list to introduce myself, which is a little, you know, intimidating, but, uh, I didn't want to say thank you to the council for, uh, helping me in the event to come down and see. And I also wanted to say thank you, we're welcome to, uh, see, uh, Island residents as well. Um, we, as you know, we're trying to get, uh, help run into trust and we are, that we have not made any substantial, substantial moves yet on that, as you know. But the government is not super great at a lot of things, so it's a long process, the process is very complicated. But, um, in the meantime, I'd talk to Lash and would know that we are, um, engaging with, with these rural communities and that's part of my job as a relation specialist to, uh, come and speak with everyone, get to know them better, find out what's in their need for, uh, local relevant or economic opportunities that they have. Or anything else discussed, um, there'll be a lot of people coming down because we just, um, engaged with K L J, which is a land planning team. Um, we've just begun to, uh, looking to how we're going to structure, as you know, um, how those are number one priority. Want to make sure we have super housing for our community members, it's a further distance away from the, um, nuclear power plant and sort of any waste. So, um, but in the meantime, we'll be working on that plan and it's part of working on that. I love to speak with council, speak with, uh, residents and speak with some other, um, rural communities to sort of figure out what we can all partner on and how, how we can develop that, that will best, um, impact region and bring, um, opportunities to everyone involved. So, thank you again for, uh, letting me introduce myself, again, my name is Lisa Plato and I appreciate your time, happy to meet you.
Yeah, so. I want to publicly say I try to be darned, I'm honest with, running a communication, quite a bit of late, but, uh, just to publicly thank the community for your partnership with, uh, obtaining some funds for the two of them. Like I told John Johnson, this has been, uh, being able to work together with community and advocate and share it at the state level.
Yeah.
Being able to push through and get some of that, some of the funding from the state, we get that, I don't know, so I want to publicly thank the community as well.
Great, we appreciate that, thank you. And hopefully it's fun, keep it going, I'll get the bets up for it too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, on to the administration, we have page eight, transition into our sanitary sewer company.
Yes, so this is a good transition, so since our council meeting, I am happy to say that, um, our Arisomaro sanitary district did receive some appropriation in the, um, bonding bill, uh, with the state. So originally when you're asking for fifty percent of the whole project, um, we were able to get ten million dollars, which would, will cover a lot more percent of the engineering. Um, and planning for the sanitary district, so, uh, we do believe it's still a way because it moves the project forward. Uh, the way it was explained to us from our legislators is this is somewhat of a down payment. And so, um, the state will pay for the planning and then we'll have to go back in the next bonding cycle and request, um, the rest of the funds. And so this is their way of doing it, installments. Um, what that means is the hard work has just begun. Um, and so the four communities, um, are now working together on a joint power agreement. Um, which I suppose has been, um, amazing and helping to chat back and talk with the four communities. Uh, and so once we get that joint powers agreement approved, you can see the more progress that years by council meeting, then we can start to move forward. Um, the joint powers together will be able to, um, purchase land and we'll be able to choose how the engineering will move forward and then be able to quickly, um, make those decisions. The joint powers then will, um, it'll be set up on how decisions will be made and then, um, as a government can be that joint powers will be open meeting more on things like that. So, there'll be a lot more information coming. But this is great news, so.
Awesome work from that, I'd be a big extent of the powers, they're pushing for this law. So, at what point in time did we actually create the district and then add board members representing the district doing this?
Yeah, so we kind of talked back and forth, uh, about what we, what we should do, if we should create the district or do the joint powers. Um, it's agreed, especially with the way the, the, uh, legislation, the word is that a joint powers would be first, um, especially in planning. The sanitary district would be created once we actually have a facility to build. Um, so sanitary district actually becomes its own government entity. Um, and so we don't want to create that now and we don't only have the government, um, because we don't, we don't have the facility. And so the sanitary district will be, um, created down the line, it's just right now, um, without the easiest, just with what we, what we need to do, the decision we need to make, um, the joint powers will be.
So with the joint powers essentially the four communities hold the land together, they will build the building together and then actually turn it over to the new creative government.
No, so the joint powers will actually would own the, um, so the joint powers itself is a government, it takes a whole different, that sanitary district itself. Sanitary district would have taxing authorities, um, and things like that, where the joint powers, um, it's just a little bit different. Um, so, so the cities wouldn't collectively own the land per se, if there's land acquisition, that joint powers would be.
Yeah, there comes this good question, uh. My understanding is that it goes more or less back and forth to the legislative process, my understanding is that at the end, when the ten million dollars appropriated, uh, for whatever reason, I don't know, for whatever reason, that legislation, that law that passed appropriated that ten million dollars, specifically contemplated that the four cities would have a joint powers agreement together, that that would be, if the city would access the ten million dollars. Then my view is, and I, I know what the four cities leaders are, is, but my understanding, my view is that so however far the powers group gets, using ten million dollars for the planning purposes or acquisition purposes, et cetera, however far we get, when the district is formed, when the additional appropriation comes through, the, the joint powers are able to just stop at that point, assign everything over to the district, the land, the, whatever facility, planning documents and then create, maybe they'll remove the word of planning document, say something for what happened, I don't know. But wherever we're at, the law will be assigned to the district, the joint powers will go away, the district will sue the private going forward and operate. That, that's what I'm actually, how this can work, so the joint powers agree that they move four cities, it's just a temporary first step to get them to on, basically.
With that, uh, in terms of this, even thinking about this, we have to start preparing for the next office meeting session. And so we did submit to the governor's office, um, the private again, the proposal, um, because the twenty twenty four projects were due, um, last week. And so, um, and started that whole lobbying. So, um, yeah, it, it's a step in my direction and after a couple of years' work, we're, we're seeing some progress.
Back to know the, uh, state cabinet, kind of, sort of, so.
You have a couple of questions? She said it's worth a start. We'll get the test, so this is good. Um, we're gonna be right to item D, which is approve the resolution twenty three thousand nineteen, awarding the sale of general obligation utility revenue bonds. All right, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Corio, good. Sorry for sitting you way back, but without prejudice. Okay, um, a fairly short presentation, thanks. Um, a month ago, I was here to recall the recommendations on structuring and sizing the bond issue bid for your, this year. Um, since that time, we, with city staff help, prepared the official statement, which is the official disclosure document that we help arc the bonds. Um, it also helps the basis of working out compensation with the rating agencies. Staff set in on the management phone call, they did very well and the rating was reaffirmed with over minus. You might recall that, uh, because it's a utility project, we were able to access the credit enhancement program of the state. Um, and that slapped a triple rating on bonds as well, so it's slightly more attractive. We had, um, four bids, uh, minimum this morning, uh, actually we got six potential vendors, but only four actually submitted. Um, we always hope to get them at least three, so only time we get three more, I'm happy with that. Um. Just as I explain what, what's going on, I'm not, I actually handouts to show you what the end result is. Um, I think if you use the results, I understand the mechanics of it. One of the basic rule, base rules municipal finance, government finance, that, you know, as interest rates rise, prices go up. So that simply means, let's say you, like, purchased a ten thousand mile home on your computer. And slap two percent. Let's say you're near three or four or five, wait for your ten thousand dollars to mature, interest rates rise. And all of a sudden you decided you want to cash your bond out early. You're not gonna be able to sell it for four months, because why would someone pay ten thousand dollars for two percent? When they can do ten thousand dollars pay four months, right, so they would, um, pay you less. So, under, understanding the mechanics, necessarily understand why for the last several years now, we've been in an environment whereby investors want to hedge against them, where they want to pay actually extra money. So instead of giving you the power of the bond, they want to pay you a premium, and then slap a higher exit. So what that means is, is we have to be paid more than what we're asking for, and we use that extra money to boost the bond. So we'll pay a higher rate, basically on, but we borrow less money to sell. And so in the end, the net effective rate works out to be. So having settled, I do have some, I have some. Okay, so one of the papers that went out, uh, basically shows you the bid results, shows you the four bidders and that effectively is great. Um, the winning bid is at three point five six, I told you, three point five six, eighty two, three eight percent. And when I was here a month ago, I showed you three point five six, five two percent, so just about made down to the, down to the. Um, but one of the other handouts, uh, basically shows the coupon, which is the rate that is slapped on the bonds and then the underlying units. And that's the one that shows you on the far right hand column, uh, what they actually paid. So if you saw the first principal payment was eight thousand dollars, we were on the right, you'll see they actually paid more than eight thousand dollars. So, in the end, that added a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in cash that came back to the deal. So, the final handout is basically the cash folder you used to see in the spreadsheet here, if you looked at a month ago. But when I was here a month ago, we were looking at a bond issue that was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars larger. We pitched the bond by a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, took that premium and broke it down. And then if you look at the coupons down below, we're paying a four percent rate to get a bar of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars price. So over the life of this bond, which is about fifteen years, we're actually gonna pay about twenty two thousand dollars less over fifteen years from what I showed you a month. So by the government, I said that's close enough, one more. But it just means that our, Jackson, all the door, Ellen, House. So with that, um, I will stop there. Oh, and I should say, and how, and how do we downsize the bonds, what I tried to do was go through the principal payments and pro rate them. So that first payment, I tried to keep it roughly, you know, halfish of all the other payments, because I'm only gonna add about six months to you now on your first principal payment. Um, but then thereafter, I reassigned the principal payments at the annual expiry post, they're five thousand bucks, here, here's the funding, they're safe. Basically, I started across there.
So the numbers are pretty far enough from here.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm, you know, a month ago, we didn't go over it, we didn't, yeah, so.
We've got some bonds already. Next, council, any questions? We're actually taking motion, uh, for a recommendation of this. On most, uh, they were just. Part of twenty three, match. Second, I'll do, we'll make a motion in a second, uh, approving, uh, resolution twenty three nineteen, which is awarding certain regulation, uh, till you have any thoughts. Any other questions or any other comments from your end of the?
I just have one question, and so, um, um, sorry, sorry to see you take it down now. So the resolution that was in the packet did not have the bond payments on it, the interest rate, so that has since been, um, uh, fixed information that is before you.
And that's pretty, um, we did a sale resolution in the past, um, on, on the, on the, so they were, they did my scout with my, uh, script, they did.
All right, council, motion in the second, uh, bring.
Hi.
JP, I, Jason, I, maybe you will.
And thank you, um, this one I mentioned is, I was asking, signed good form tonight, that's awesome. Well, the man, we can do all sorts of other business weapons.
Thank you.
Sincerely appreciate your welcome.
Very hard.
Those are, so I'm actually just, but I was gonna stick with the original, but it will be good form.
The council, we have a new line of information, which is. Twelve, row eleven, that's.
Oh, council, we received a, um, variance application from Larry Hall of LP collision located at twelve, kind of, row eleven request. He is requesting to build a addition onto its perimeter, its primary structure on the west side of the building. Um, the current setback for that lot is a twenty foot side yard setback. He is requesting to build this addition up to two feet from the property line, resulting in a variance of eighteen feet. Um, I kind of go through things in my report, um, but just to cover them, we held a public hearing at the planning zoning commission meeting last week. Um, they moved a recommendation onto council for this variance. Um, I covered the various standards of review of zoning ordinance in my report. Um, we did find that it met the practical difficulties test, um, and we moved it on to council. The only interpretation that, um, the planning and zoning commission brought up is that the property abutting this lot is the Walters property, which, as you know, the city entered into a five year contract for the new purchase agreement for, um, Mr. Paul would like to purchase a lot next to his current lot to then revert back to meeting the zoning standards for that side yard setback. However, we cannot sell him that lot until we have completed the contract for me. Um, we have no legal way to bind him to purchasing that upon the completion of the contract for me. Um, so that was interpretation of the zoning committee. They did ask more of council, which were their concerns, and we wanted to be there.
So, one term first. I, I, I do not want to ever hinder the building for business to grow. And we, like you said, we know what the, what the legality is, our surrounding personal problem. Uh, so is this like one of those things that we were allowed to make a variance on this, if something should happen and that property were not to fall under city jurisdiction? Would that put the city at any kind of liability on the ropes and we also invite the property to see if there's a setback question on that?
So, in that instance, um, the variance would stand as law, I don't think we have any things for variance. We've had conversations with the building inspectors regarding the various fireproofing and overhang things that come with being that close to a property line, um, so I believe Mr. Paul is well aware of those. Um, the condition in the resolution before you is, in the hypothetical, that the city completes the purchase of the Walters property, we then sell a lot to Mr. Paul, he then combines those lots. Normally, under most general circumstances, the variance would carry over to whatever that new property line is. Um, then allowing him to have only two foot setback on movement for about property line. The condition that we have in there is that if he is to purchase that side yard, side lot and combine them, the variance would not carry over.
Just gonna have one thing that, um, I know I'm gonna have a picture of Mr. Paul that said the city wanted to sell their, um, land. Um, and that's not the case whatsoever, and as we know, um, the average city will be property for, not development. We simply cannot sell the land, we do not own it. It really was, I thought that I would support Mr. Paul, his private business, who would support, um, it, selling land. So he can extend it, he's excluded, simply at this moment, he can't sell him when he don't have.
Verify that, because I, that's another.
Um, and just for the record and for public record, uh, unfortunately, the weather choice might have been sound since the nineteen thirties as I led Mr. Paul. And while I do not have any financial interest in this, and aside from taking, um, voting, so there's no possibility of people who are choosing to be fair.
I will look for a resolution twenty three, July. Motion, second, uh, another discussion. And. Yeah, I, I appreciate, uh, the zoning certifications on this and, uh, hearing, uh, hearing the proposal. I'm trying to help the business grow, so thank you for all. Another discussion. With bring.
Hi.
Jason, hi, David is, hi, and we're good things. We're gonna go on to public works and hearing, which is request approve the pass number one, the less than five hundred and twenty five thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollar payment and points and cents for the twenty three southwest, who has died in this court.
So yes, this is a pay as you pay, we're committed to name. Um, like I said, here are some funds for the project, I seen dispensing last year. Um, the majority of these homes have been completed, that's a horse street from A Street down to second avenue, second house. So, so the underground utilities are in, um, you start coming up with a street construction. We got a little bit, so their planning starts to, you know, relax, um, facing a lot of people later. But, uh, yet they're doing a good job, they're completing, they're progressing, um, they're putting in. Pay as you were wanting.
We've had, uh, so we just had our, uh, these, most recent neighborhood update this last Thursday, and any property owners on Fourth Street are ready to come and participate in that. What was very pleasing to hear was overwhelming positive feedback from the homeowners along the stretch and their interaction with council. And that, that was, that was very strongly noted by the property, so I, I want to put two pings on that. Uh, you know, when we had our first meeting here, almost six, seven weeks ago, there was a lot of people that were just nervous, that didn't know what to expect. But overall, it's, we've been able to get in there, and we're working, like, right on. And so I want to thank once or, okay, very real, inspiring, to be concerned, that's only two years, so.
I'll work with the whole, uh.
So, the motion, a second, to approve the first payment, in their discussion, council.
That's what we've been, since we, you know, being on that speakers in the nine years, but they changed a lot.
All right, Brandon.
I am, JP.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is, uh.
We go.
No, I don't read it.
Group, group, please. Brandon.
Hi.
JP.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is, uh. When the department administrator is in the near head.
No, I'd just like to know that I try really hard to keep my report to one page, and I did not succeed this time. Um, I'm just trying to show us how busy you've been and how busy staff is, so. Um, it's hard for us to act collectively, uh, while then, working pretty hard.
Went to the city hall, stepped, stepped up and helped on there. Whoa, my partner's really mean to be and getting that, who will open that? So that, that would really, really nice to see as well, so thanks for that. Yes, Rachel from the library. A lot of people are on patio.
Um, so thank you for letting me come again tonight, uh, some of my third person of thought this time. Uh, my interview was very friendly, but I think pretty much everyone here does. Underwritten the library, and we have lots of things happening. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank the, uh, chief staff's committee and, uh, Brandon specifically for goodness in the vendor market, especially in the pre-order, where we didn't have to worry about the mother. We sold six hundred and twenty-four dollars worth of those DVDs, CDs, miscellaneous things. So that made me super happy and just overjoyed to see how many people came through that market, so, thanks for that. Uh, so our rating program is going strong, we have over two hundred kids signed up by the second week. I'm not sure what my number is are right now, but we've been seeing a lot of challenge sheets come in. Um, so they're being very active and enjoyable, so. It's been really fun to see all those kids coming and all those smiles. And, uh, it helps with the fact that my other thing to say tonight is that we got retired at this point. Carolyn Blankenship has worked for the library for the last twenty-five years, and, uh, due to medical reasons, she had to end her certification here. So we will miss her very, very greatly, I want to completely thank her for the twenty-five years service for our little library, very, very loud. She's just been a firecracker in a level, um, for the work team, so. At our board meeting, each one will be looking at, um, the physician description, and hopefully get that posted for, um, someone to take up those hours, um. Even though we got a board back here, when people say, hey, I hear you're covered. So we should have a, a kind of, uh, uh, new employee thing there. Otherwise, uh, I've got a couple of adult programs coming up, last thing for me tonight. Thursday, Chad Lewis is going to be speaking about the Zarks here in Minnesota. That is at seven o'clock at the Senior Center next door. Um, the senior centers love, have been nice enough to let us have two programs already similar. Um, so Chad will be talking, and then also Doug will be back to town, he's a lot of programming with us, usually for a one home, one panel. But this time, he's going to talk about the first season, so, the United States, so that'll be on, uh, July twenty-third. So again, though, they're both at seven o'clock at, at the history center, or not the history center, senior center. If there's any questions for me, or anything that you'd like to leave a castle on the next.
I wanted to just, uh, back up what you're saying with Mrs. Blankenship, uh, center, thank you, no, like, like you said, she's been, uh, picturing that library for a long time, since that's a key performance, so. One of the, probably can't come back.
I'm sure that, that's passing on to, we'll be giving her, I have that board, so. And I hope to have a small reception for her while she's feeling up to it, so, um, stay tuned for that on our webpage. Also webpage, uh, adam.lid.mn.us, to see any of our summer meeting program programs. Thank you so much.
Well, works. That's the meeting, one day, first, uh, first up, so. Big thanks to them. Perfect meeting, I guess.
Yeah, also, sure. Um, I also, like, you know, that, so we're going to do a little work on paper card. Three quotes. Hundred thirty-four thousand, hundred twenty thousand, hundred eight thousand, second, uh, budget. Two with that, that's okay, you got it. Budgeted, just for a little, uh, color here, uh, keeping that with, uh, mine, my, I started planning until this, which, um, I'm familiar, Howard, talked about the diagram for this. Um, so I was aware, it's all right, everybody else, we're talking about that, everybody needs to get something, so. But, uh, the overwhelming communication out of course, in that case, was this needs to be done, and it's covered the budget. We appreciate that, and it's, it was.
That was, is that bill safe as part of, with the back, like, seventy, or eighty? Uh, commit.
Yeah, it's a, it's.
So it's, yeah. It's part of, part of the areas. Appreciate that, well, streets of bad change, yeah.
Thanks. Which, to highlight, one of the things that been talking, so, but we need to make sure we're getting more money to, so we don't get any problem. So somehow, I know we gave that idea of spending more money, in fact, we can make sure we get the tools to play with, we need to, keep this one coming for the problem. Well, because we put a whole bunch of money in the streets around the school, and that was one of the, and also, we got to have a, for us, too.
There, I was, have you guys sort of, look up the spend that, to spend that hundreds of times?
No, I just want to look, oh, I got, oh, it's like, the money's been, uh, cheated already.
Yeah.
Look, I just, um, to let them know that I was going to go ahead with that.
Uh, do we need a motion to approve this very matter?
We can, typically, if I like street improvements every year, when we budget that one, we typically don't, we just know the multiple.
So, all right. Okay. Need me also, why don't you keep it central, well? I want to put a mention of words.
Oh, good, thanks.
Uh, we, we advertised that there's still, uh.
Oh, that's, yes.
Uh, I think it's all not, all right.
Yeah, for right now, we got it.
Yeah, we'll have an opening at the end of the year, but for right now, our part's full.
Uh, fire department, uh, I'll substantiate what Todd said, uh, from the relief, the relief and fireside. Chief Sess was eventred tremendous weekend, uh, so hopefully thank Chief Sess, uh, board, uh, talk to Carolyn, and she'll be bringing a review of the festival in, uh, July. So very much appreciate that, the collaboration that we saw, that we set with it. Invite from chair top, to the cemetery, by since, uh. Before we move into our post session, I want to publicly also thank Dr. Champa, uh, we will be having a meeting before she leaves our district. And she will be here tonight, but I want to publicly thank her, uh, for the work and, uh, the, uh, relationship that the school district and the city have. And I like to share this with people that may, and I want, uh, mayor meetings and meeting with other city officials to hear them commend our city and the relationship we have with the school districts, it's very tellable. And part of that was her leadership in the, in the school board, and also the city's ability to work with. And, uh, it's very sad to see her go, there are a lot of people trying to figure out ways to keep her here, but, uh, she had an opportunity in Hastings, and I think she'll be well, I want to wish her well. But, uh, just wanted to publicly thank her, and, uh, we look forward to it, we got that, so.
There is a reception, no?
Yes. So, that, so, you want to do that to her? Uh, so before we go into close session, I will be pursuing, so statutory sections thirteen B dash zero five, under division three C. Three, the meeting, we close to discuss offers, or common offers for the purchase or sale of rented property by the city for the following properties that have been placed. PID number six eight four two seven zero zero three zero, and five twenty, at five hundred and twenty-third Avenue Northwest. PID six eight seven six zero zero one three zero, approximately eighty acres adjoining, or mutually current fifty-two, or high of fifty-two over grass. That land consists of excess right over there, ten forty of the gas project, complete listing of the PIDs can be obtained from a city account request. Uh, items on this will be access strategy, and then parts of discussions, review of a room based purchase offers, and discussion of possible purchase of parcel, parcel number six eight seven six zero zero one three zero. Over, close session. Motion second, Brandon.
Hi.
JP.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is, uh.